Mr. Baldr is not going to be here. Did he call or anything? Alright, I guess we'll continue then. Is everybody ready? Like the call to Oglesby City Council meeting to order. Roll call please.
Walbridge, Finley.
Here.
McDermott.
Here.
Stefanielli.
Here.
Kern.
Here. Please stand for pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, number four, public comment on agenda items only. Seeing that there is none, we'll move on. Number five, approved minutes from the July 22nd, 2024 special meeting. If there's no additions, corrections, or revisions, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Here we go.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number six, approved bills presented for payment in the amount of $163,056.71. If there's no corrections, additions, or revisions, can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
And I'll make a motion to second.
Roll call please.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. I don't have the payroll amount on here. Is it on the bottom? Let's see here, payroll. How about I just?
You got two of them. You got seven, 719 and 82.
How about I list the item and you can make the motion with the numbers. Sound good?
Sure.
Alright, next is approved payroll for July 19th, 2024 and August 2nd, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the payroll for July 19th in the amount of $73,788.25 and the payroll from August 2nd in the amount of $76,054.94.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
Roll call please.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number eight, award bid for Dry Bridge Water Main Loop. McDermott.
Okay, at 147,307. Alright, we just need to get it approved and get her going.
Okay.
Any questions?
Nope, been waiting on this awhile. It should make everybody happy on the, on the east side because now when the bridge gets fixed, they're not going to have to worry about not having water. So, that'll be pretty important.
I'll make a motion to award bid for the Dry Bridge Water Main Loop to John Pullhorn Sons Incorporated from LaSalle, Illinois.
I'll second.
Roll call please.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number nine, send Augustiniac site plans to planning commission. Stefanielli.
Okay, so they had went for some variances and they were granted such variances. So now the next step is for them to submit the revised plans to the planning commission with those variances in place. So, the formality that we have to take here is to approve sending it to the planning commission. So if there's no questions, I'll go ahead and make the motion to send to the planning commission.
I'll second it.
Okay, roll call please.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye.
And if I can interrupt Jason, Becky, I do not think we're going to need to have another hearing notice for this, correct?
No, does not require.
So you're just going to call a planning commission meeting at your convenience? Okay, thank you.
Okay. Number 10, approved travel costs associated with Illinois Municipal League Conference. Stefanielli.
Okay, so every year elected officials go down for this Illinois Municipal League Conference where we get training, there's seminars, it's very good educationally. And, you know, obviously with inflation and everything else, the costs have gone up. So, as a matter of good practice, I wanted to approve these expenses, all of us as the group, before we just incur them.
So, a couple of things, I don't really have an issue with approving them ahead of time. Couple of things I wanted to point out though. We talked a little bit about this with our travel situation. We found out, I think, when the subject came up, that our, our travel, advanced travel ordinance that we had was only placed on file like eight, nine years ago. It was never technically approved. The good news is, we've been operating off of that as if it was approved. So.
I do think you need to get it approved though, Jason, because the statute requires it actually.
So we, so we do. And so that does have to happen. But, the point I'm trying to make with it, in there, in that one, the only advanced travel that needs to be approved is airline tickets that are over $500. And, so I'm not a fan of having to necessarily approve these things ahead of time because each commissioner can approve what, what they feel up to is necessary. But, I don't have a problem if that's what you want to do. The bigger issue I have with it, and unfortunately that gentleman is not here tonight, is, like you said, this is for elected officials and appointed officials. And in these travel costs, we are sending one of our electric people up to the conference. And in all the years I've ever been there, there's never been a single seminar, trade show, conference thing that has anything to do with electrical utilities. In fact, we send people to an IMEA conference that has all that kind of stuff where they have training seminars and vendor shows and things like that. So, to me, it should only be for the elected officials and the appointed officials because there is very specific things up there that's training for them. So, that's my two cents on it. For what it's worth.
Well, it is over $500 for us to go over there, even though I think they're.
Only for flights, is what I'm saying.
The $500 is for travel expense, Mac. I think the hotel room statute is $300 a night.
Yeah. So two nights would be over that.
Per night, Mac.
Yeah, per night.
Per night. So you can't go over $300 per night.
Is that in the, the current one?
It was in the ordinance that was supposed to be.
So maybe we should get it approved to make it right.
Because I know one thing we don't do is we don't do it for like when we send people to training things. And I mean, that takes, that costs thousands of dollars when we send people to these training things for, uh, lineman training.
Well, you, you made a comment of the $500 right there, just two nights is over $500.
No, but the $500 Mac is for travel, for airfare travel. And you can go above that, but you gotta get pre-approval to go above the 500 for airfare travel. The room is $300 per night for as many nights as you're there. So, I don't think you're probably going to exceed either one of those. I mean, if you're not taking an airplane to get to this convention, which you won't, you'll be driving to Chicago, I'm sure. The IRS mileage rate applies at 55 or 60 cents or whatever.
We do it per diem every year.
Yeah.
So, that's the other, again, it's so minor, I wouldn't ever jump into somebody's department about it, but I do think the best way to do about it is people get compensated for their receipts. So that way they're compensated for what they spend. But, it's so minor, that's not the problem. The issue I have with is that we are sending somebody that I don't think should be going to that conference.
The only thing I'm saying is we're spending over $500 even for the two rooms. It wouldn't hurt to just go ahead and get it pre-approved. We know the expense is there, right?
I'm waiting for everybody else to talk first before I talk second.
Let's do it.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, the way that we came up with that was, the police chief is only going for one night, so there's obviously an opening there. So that's why we had extended that out. If the council feels that they want to do away with that and just the police chief goes for one night, I'm perfectly fine with that. That's not a problem. The way that the expenses started out, as all of you know, they were quite, it was quite expensive for all those nights. Now, the one thing that I really appreciate, and I think probably the public would appreciate, is that all of us cut it a night short to save on that expense. Now, furthermore, I think what you had brought up, which is supposed to be on the agenda here for later on in the evening, and I think we should table it because the person who proposed it isn't here. I think, when we're talking about our departments, and let's say the chief has to go to a convention or something, well commissioner Finley is the check and balance there. And yes, of course, they can spend up to $20,000 without council approval, but that's his department and that's him putting that check and approval on the person who is underneath them. When it comes to us, we are agents of the council. That means that my boss is the city council here, just like your boss and everybody else. When we meet together, the council, we're agents of the council. So I think if any of us incur these expenses, like travel, we should all basically come to terms and say, okay, we should be approving this stuff as a group. That's where I'm coming from with it. Nowhere else. I just think it's a matter of good practice, it's transparency, and if I was, you know, if I was on the other side of this table, I would say, well, hey, you know, shouldn't you guys be approving as a group the bills that one elected guy has incurred? Because that's the kind of stuff you read about on the news. I don't think any of us want to be on the news in that fashion, so. I'm just trying to do my due diligence as the accounts and finance guy.
I think that's a fair perspective. That is, I appreciate that. But the difference is, you're asking the council to approve something in there that, in my opinion, the commissioner can just approve himself. If he thought it was that important, then he can answer for it.
If you want to approve your own expenses, do it at your own risk. I think this is transparency, it's a better way to do it.
But what you're asking us to do is you're asking the council to approve a person to go up to it that I don't, I don't think has any purpose to go up to.
Okay, so, so what, what are the others' things? Should we, should we remove the other person and it's, and it's just the police chief, the clerk, and the elected folks? Tell me, I don't have all the answers.
And then that way if the commissioner feels.
Well, I'd like to hear from the others. You stated your point.
Okay.
I do know the police chief, I mean, they have meetings and all that for them, you know. So that's why they always went, because there is meetings and conferences strictly for the police, just like there is for the attorney and stuff like that. So I mean, I don't have an issue with, with the chief going because he does, he does bring back stuff from the conference. The electric, I mean, I'll be upfront, I just, I've never seen one go before. I don't know if there's anything out there that he would gain from it. I mean, the commissioner of electric is going, so he would be the one bringing it back. That's just my opinion though.
Yeah, while we had the open spot, obviously those things are handed out by seniority, which is how all these union contracts operate. So, that's how we arrived there. But if you guys feel that you want to remove that spot, I'm perfectly fine with it. You tell me what you want to do, I'll make the motion for it.
Well, I actually feel that even though you may not have any particular set point in, like, there may not be anything electrical, maybe you'll catch something in one of the other seminars that somebody else doesn't. I do feel that we don't need to put a burden on the city for anything that isn't appropriate. But, there are seminars there that I've attended that had nothing to do with streets or water. I, I brought some back that I know has helped me maintain the city streets and the water as well. It's had nothing to do with streets, but I learned something out of it.
So do we want to approve this with, with or without?
If you're asking me if we should approve it with or without the electrical, I think we should. It's.
With or without?
With.
Okay, I approve it with.
If he's a council member, area council member, we all have a.
Well, he's not a council member, he's just a department employee. He's, he's a department head. Obviously, that goes by seniority, those.
Right.
That's kind of how you have to work that kind of stuff.
And we send him to a specific conference for the IMEA conference that has training seminars and vendor shows and all kinds of things like that. So that's just my two cents.
Well, I, I think we've talked enough about this. I'm going to make a motion to approve the expenses for the Illinois Municipal League Conference minus the, the extra spot. So it would be just the chief, the clerk, and the elected officials.
Appointed and elected officials.
Appointed and elected officials.
I'll second that motion.
Okay. Roll call please.
Finley.
Aye.
McDermott.
Aye.
Stefanielli.
Aye.
Kern.
Aye. Number 11, proposed short-term rental ordinance. Stefanielli.
Alright, so this is something that we previously talked about and it was sent to the planning commission for review. The planning commission had some suggestions as shown in your packet materials. Now, I know that there were several copies. One was the original copy that Becky and I had taken the time to put together, so we had a framework to go by. What we used was Peru as far as the fees go, so that we were in line and we weren't completely out of line as far as what we were looking as far as the costs go. I kind of drove more of the, what would be required as far as the inspection of the home to make sure that there was working smoke alarms, that it was kept in a respectable manner, and that it was suitable and appropriate for short-term rental. As it stands, I mean, we have a lack of lodging for the state park. I mean, given our close proximity to the state park, we stand to capitalize on this. So, if we didn't do anything with it, I think it's just our loss as a community. Unlike month-to-month multi-tenant building or long-term rentals, these B&Bs are only utilized if they are well-kept and maintained. I know we have a couple of folks that wrote letters of support, and as soon as we're done discussing this, it'd be nice to have them come up and at least explain their experiences with it.
I'll be honest, I'd like to hear their words before we even make a vote on it, if possible.
I'm good with that if.
And I got another question.
I don't have a problem with you. You want to bring them up now or after?
I think we should.
No, I think it's fine. Let's bring them up now and then we can deliberate after, if you're okay with that.
Absolutely.
Okay, so, Mr. Danning and Ms. Roscoe.
Anybody?
Hi everyone, my name is Jason Niger. I'm a station provider over at St. Elizabeth in Ottawa, and I have some short-term rentals in Ottawa. I currently take a call over there. I do a 124-hour shift a week. I do a week in the month over there. We, my wife and I started short-term rentals over there for the simple purpose of having a place to stay and then renting out when I'm not there. So that's kind of how we started with it over there. We did buy a house over here that we're finishing a light rehab on right now. Did not know that there was initially a short-term rental or inserting like that when we bought this house. The reason we're coming over here is obviously the hospital is migrating. Peru has extremely stringent short-term rentals, which makes it very hard, very difficult to get something. I have a couple coworkers that live in Oglesby. They talk all the time nonstop since I've been here a bit. Absolutely, the town seems to be very well taken care of and with proximity to Star Rock. I think there's going to be a lot of people that are going to stay here. We have probably about 25 or 30 guests a year in Ottawa that ask us approximately to Star Rock. They don't want to be closer. Peru has maybe one short-term rental. LaSalle has, I think, 10 or so, I think, going over there. And I think those do vary very well because of the closeness vicinity to the state park as well, and then obviously here. So, that's kind of where I am and how I started coming over there. We are very stringent too with like, we allow people to stay with us, obviously. So we have a review system on here, on Airbnb. You know, up to five-star review. So my wife and I don't let anybody enter five-star reviews. We have when we officially, or when we initially started, it turned us a little bit. So those people come in, they do crack nicely a little bit. Because you know, spend a little bit of money to kind of fix the issue, so we don't do that anymore. But it's nice that there is a rating system for that, for people to be able to determine who's coming, who's going. We have a two-bed, one-bath over in Ottawa, which is, which is what I've heard essentially over here. And it's essentially small families, little kids coming into the neighborhood. A lot of people have dogs. We allow animals to come stay, and where most hotels don't. So people are looking for that extra option of, you know, lodging to be able to rent it out, get a place to walk, and save the neighborhood as well. Obviously, we do review. So we have five-star reviews to be able to give good locals. If our place is trashy, if we're not taking care of it, if we're not maintaining, if we're not being a good host, people aren't going to stay with us. So, it's kind of a back-and-forth thing as well, that lets us help, keeps us maintaining the home and keeping everything in great condition. We get our numbers out to neighbors. So if there's any sort of issue, neighbors taxes are going to be called straight away. I've gotten two phone calls in two years over there, and it was just because they were parked a little bit close to their rent. It was very, very minor stuff. A lot of workers coming. We had, you know, solar workers stayed at our house. We have, one of our plants shuts down in February. I mean, the places are just walking non-stop for that. Just a lot of people coming from out of town and different factors, some things here as well. And then for a couple of our houses too, we've had neighbors vote. And again, every house I have, I have at least two neighbors that voted within a year time span where they live across the street from where they live. A couple stores down or whatever, where their kids, grandkids, whoever, stay for a month or a week or whatever for Christmas. And then they have a place where they go back and forth because their place is. So, that's kind of my experience. I guess that's what we kind of do.
I appreciate you giving us that info. I do think that there is obviously something here that we can benefit from, especially with Mathias and the state park going to be expanding here to even more opportunities and stuff like that. The only thing you said that was kind of interesting is, because we based our draft off of Peru, and when you said, you're a little worried about Peru's being too stringent. So, whenever we have our final draft of this, I, I'd actually love if you had a chance to take a look at and tell me what areas you think.
It's not necessarily easy for you when one of your businesses run. They'll want people to check and say, that's almost checking out, things like that, where, you know, we might miss a booking. We probably run about 60% occupied, I would say, throughout the year. So, you know, we missed a couple bookings that people want to go back to that, especially in the summertime. Right now it's crazy times where it's here, and the weather time is awkward, that obviously. So a lot of people here for the parks in that time period, September, so everyone's here for, it's kind of like Chicago and stuff. Just lots of reasons, but Peru just had lots of different, they were trying to control the data, turn it out, control your occupancy, which I can see that being controlled into, you know, those, they have to replace it to do that as well, you know, on top of there. But, I have to relook through their list, but I mean, they have, I'm sure they have to put their ordinances like.
I know that our, our planning commission has gone through and made quite a bit of edits and modifications, so hopefully, I don't know the specifics of, of those concerns right now, but I'm kind of curious if those were addressed by them.
It wasn't the fees, it wasn't, you know, like operator tax, or like 5% operator tax, whatever it was with that stuff. It was just them controlling the business. I absolutely agree, you know, inspection should be held to make sure that you're creating a safe environment for, for guests as well and everything like that. So it wasn't all that, it wasn't that, it was just, it was very much into controlling that business aspect and, you know, it was, it was me and that, and their big thing is, you know, for us going to buy these homes, we had to have kind of a yes before we go buy ours. It is a big management decision on the house. Peru would then have you send out letters to all the neighbors within. It was around 300, 400, 400, 500, a city that was a large area, and all it took was one note for you to shut down. And so that's why you don't see anyone looking for Peru, because it actually doesn't make sense for you to buy a nice place over there, so.
Come on up.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hello.
I'm Mary Regina Roscoe, originally from Oglesby. We have Airbnbs and we also manage them and clean them for other people. We have them as far as like DeKalb, Princeton, and all over. We started it with our main home in Tonica. So it's, you know, a smaller community, like, you know, kind of like how it is here. There's not much going on, but it's really broad. Because we're only like seven miles from Star Rock. I mean, it's booked non-stop. Like Matt mentioned, most people that are coming here are coming for Star Rock, and I don't think you can get any closer than Oglesby. Also workers, tons and tons of workers just come in here and, and families. That's kind of like our experience. We've probably had two or three bad guests in the last few years. They don't like damage anything, they don't bother the neighbors. It's more like a pain for us of like cleaning. But, we try to set our Airbnbs up to be geared towards family. I know as like a mother of six, I'm, I'm sorry, a four, I'm not trying to go stay at a hotel with two queen beds. Like, we want the space with our family and our dog, and that's kind of really who's coming to, you know, our small town. No one's coming to throw these big extravagant parties. They're here to see Star Rock. Neighbors also, like Matt mentioned, will book the house, so their family's right across the street and they're not at a hotel. They can gather, have Thanksgiving, Christmas. Yeah, I don't know if you guys have any questions for me, or, I also have not decided to do any in Peru, just because of, I haven't read their ordinance, but there's other towns that don't allow as much work to be done, you know, to have them. So we just kind of avoid.
Well, like I said with the other one over there, you know, that, that does concern, because that was where we use as base ours off. So hopefully we've modified it enough to make things a little bit easier to where it's still welcoming, where people want to, want to come and everything, so.
I went to one city council meeting for them and there was just too much going on. I'm like, let's just go to the next town over.
Hang around, hang around for this one.
You picked a good night, so.
Come on up, man. Come on up. Stand next door. I, I have.
Glina honestly would be a good one that's a good area set up, you know, for that, depending on what the territory is. And they have, it's kind of the same thing, you know, with the fees and everything like that. They have the same inspections and everything, but, you know, they allow everything as well. You know, I think with Glina, with a lot of other ones too, if you get a bad apple in your town too, you can verbalize the license, because you have your license through the. Just another option that they have, a really nice ordinance.
Since, since I have you here, and we're going to probably talk about it.
Is anybody else going to be able to ask any questions here? Yeah, I would love to. If, if.
Go ahead and ask.
I mean, okay. So I, I want to say that I appreciate both of your comments. You offered letters of support, and I felt that the council would be better served hearing directly from you on some of these matters, because we don't Airbnb, we're not hosts. I've stayed in them before, but it's good to know this side of it. So, do you think that it's reasonable? One of our provisions, and this is something that I had kind of put in there, was that when somebody comes to apply, that the neighbors are notified that they're applying for it. It would come before the council here, we would approve it. And there's an inspection tied along with it. All this would happen before the council approves it. Now, the inspection is looking for working smoke alarms, CO alarms, a functioning hot water tank, general cleanliness, that the fence, that there's no violations with the house, that the house is basically suitable for that. We're trying to catch all that before it gets to that point. There's also fees or fines and penalties in place, so if you do have somebody who's like a bad tenant that comes in and, and, you know, they present a problem, they're shooting off fireworks in the backyard, well, that falls on you guys, and that's where the municipality comes in and says, hey, you know, you as a host has a certain amount of responsibility here where, you know, you're, you're part of this equation. So what I was worried about was regulation versus overregulation. I feel like we regulated enough where as a municipality, we have enough of a grip on it that we can weed out any problem ones right from the get-go. But we're not over-regulating it and creating a burden for you guys as the hosts. Can you, can you say a few words about that?
I, with everything you said, I agree with. It was the notification to neighbors, not that I want to be that person, because, you know, and for us, you know, it's. It's hard because it's like, if you're going to make your house into a right for a bunch of property, do you have fun neighbors? Do the neighbors have to have, do they have to say, do they have to say in your business, well, you're here with that home, as long as you are living up to the city's standards and following, you know, their ordinances, to the letter, to the deed. Most, most of them, like I said, like we, we gave our neighbor, we gave our numbers out to our neighbors and everything like that, so they can notify us if anything's going on. But, you know, you could have one, one neighbor, like I said, that, you know, I'm one next to the first one, you know, I'm one of that. Yeah, because Airbnbs do have, there are also, there is so much bad social media, and it's like if you didn't know anything else, you'd haggle because you watched the news, and you would think, oh, just get murdered, something like that.
Right.
You know, you ever just run around, you don't shoot anything. You have no idea, just like the short-term rentals, like you got, that's the connotation that's getting passed a lot of times, this and that. And that's why, you know, if you get a neighbor that that's all you've seen, that's all you know, that's talent, and it's hard to admit some otherwise from them around, except for to, to be the example. To show, but like I said, if it's based off the city, what the city needs and wants us to do, I, I agree, and we can follow along with everything the city needs us to do. And like I said, if we're very bad and neighbors complaining, everything's happening, so license recor.
There's recourse.
There's different things like that, or fines or whatever. I, I completely agree with that. I'm not worried about that because I don't want my places like that.
Yeah.
So these are homes that I want to, you know, have for 15 years. I want to keep working there, and I want my closeness vicinity, because I don't want to be driving from Ottawa to Peru with 3:00 in the morning to listen up their home.
Yeah.
Half asleep. I want to, you know, I want to be able to get there quick and go take care of my family, or, you know, I, or if I have a surgery or something, so. That's kind of my perspective.
I, I got a couple things to say. First of all, I appreciate you guys coming up here before we vote on this, because this is what we need. It's facts, okay? My question is, if somebody tears up your place, is there any way or anything in the ordinance that we have knowledge of that individual in case they ran from somebody else?
That takes care of, that gets taken care of on the platform.
Like the rating system, if hosts are being honest, like how the guests are, that prevents the next guests or next host from allowing them to stay. You know what I mean? Like, we rate them the way we should.
Right, as long as everybody's looking at it and doing their diligence and everything else.
For example, like I've been, um, pretty clean for me before, so it's not a reason.
Yeah.
I appreciate that. Thanks.
We've shared a bad guest before that we talked about and, and it was that we both gave fair reviews and he was off Airbnb shortly after. So there was Airbnb takes care of that when you do honest reviews and we review everybody. Everybody reviews us. So.
And like just to touch on like the.
And that's public knowledge, basically, right?
Yeah. Um, Airbnb guests are most of the time better than your long-term tenant. You know, the nice thing about them is it's family and we don't ask for a long-term tenant and there's absolutely no way you're getting rid of them. You know, they can sit there for years if they wanted. Or with the, if you do, you know, in some rare instance have that bad guest, they're leaving in a few days. Like they, they can't stay. You're not stuck with them. And the other thing to point out is there's so, Airbnb's aren't cheap. Like you're not gonna go spend a hundred bucks to stay home. Most times it's certain demographics and people that are staying in them. And when they're spending that kind of money, they're going to be pretty respectful. I think the only thing that you mentioned that I don't really, it being like the host's responsibility when something bad goes on, unless there's going to be like, maybe like a warning where we let the guest know. Because if something goes on like that, Airbnb kicks them out. Like I can call and say, hey, they're doing this at my property and they gotta get out. Um, because yeah, because you'll see these Airbnbs that have this long list of rules. It's fifty dollars for this. It's a hundred dollars for this. It's this, it's that. I'm not going to that Airbnb and I know I'm not doing anything wrong, but it's like if they're being that picky, like for that, I'd rather just go to the one next door that's like, you know, way more relaxed. But I agree that there should be something if the host is continuously allowing it.
Yeah.
Yeah. Like a guest does one thing for us to pay a fine would be kind of.
That's a good point.
I have one more question and I'm done. Uh, the only other thing that we had put in this, uh, you know, in this package was that, uh, there was a provision that it would be owner occupied for some period of time throughout the year. Now, how do you guys feel about that? Because I've kind of heard both ways on it. So I'd like to understand from you as, as a host, how that would affect you.
Being a local, like resident, like my Airbnbs, I have no reason to ever stay at them. I have a house right down the road. So I think that would be deteriorating people from our community from being allowed to make extra income on Airbnb. You know, like obviously Matt comes here for work and he's not from here, which is, you know, great, but someone like us wouldn't be able to reap the benefits because.
It's an investment property.
Yeah, like we have no, if we were in Florida, maybe we would have a reason to stay, but I think that'll also deter people from staying. Um, you may only get like the travel nurses and like maybe one couple, but you're gonna miss out on like families because no one wants to go stay where other people are. And then that can be a lot of work for the host. That is how we started. We'd stay at our Airbnb. Guests would come and then we leave until we knew it works, then we moved out. But it was a lot of work to, I wouldn't do it again.
Mm-hmm.
There's certain, you know, posts, people, the reason you're not going to your cell, you're going to your home is your own space and privacy. They don't want to be sharing it with, with the host. And that is kind of where you guys are going with that, where if you're doing the snowbird thing, you know, that's, um, gonna be a hard job or two to just stick like six months or whatever, a year that you're able to, to rent it out. And then like I said, for me, for my purposes of what I'm going to do with this is I, you know, I would have to try to rent that home out during that six month time to, to cover any and all expenses. Um, it's like as much as these things make the cost to you here, you know, you know, everyone's leaving the lights on, hurting water, everything like that. It's a hotel, right? So we're, uh, expenses are much higher. The opposite costs much higher, you know, you have cleanings and all that stuff and maintenance and furniture you got to replace and stuff. The cost's much higher. Um, and most of these homes would not be able to maintain with a shorter kind of program unless you're opening up for the year. And then like I said, for me specifically, you need it one day a week and then a week in a month. You know, to make it very hard.
Well, you answered a lot of questions for me. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Um, appreciate all that stuff. Um, only other things I kind of had was, one of the things you mentioned was about booking specifics. I, I haven't looked through, I haven't seen that in there for here, but we did take this from Peru. So I'm concerned if that was a thing, we'll have to look at that. Um, when you mentioned the three to four hundred foot thing, I think, I don't know if we had that initially, but we did put something in there, uh, that's two hundred feet, I think.
Two hundred feet so that the neighbors are given some kind of notice. And, and naturally to what you said, there's always gonna be one person on the block that's a naysayer that's gonna say, no, I don't want it. It's up to us, guys. The burden falls on us up here to kind of sift through that and say, okay, hey, if, if this is, if everybody else there doesn't have a problem and it's just one or two people and the majority says that they're okay with it, well, you can't stop progress for one or two people. I mean, not, you know, that's, that's just reality is, that's life, right? So, I mean, there is a provision in there and I think for us guys, when, when it comes in front of us to vote on, we'll have to look at what the inspection report shows and if there's been any letters of support or letters against from the neighbors and then we make our decision. So.
Okay.
I hope that helps.
As I was gonna say, um, so what you might not be aware of, I think about six or seven years ago, there was, this, this topic did come up to the council meeting many years ago and there was a lot of pushback from a lot of residents that they wouldn't be informed or what's going on or things like that. So I think it caused a bit of angst at the time. I think that that, I, I, I feel like that's kind of gone away now because people recognize the value of Airbnb and, and short-term rentals and things like that. So I don't know about the two hundred foot, if that would be a concern. So remember you said three to four hundred, but I will say, we're not gonna have something in here that says one person, the two hundred foot says, I don't want that comment. That, that means it shuts it down because that doesn't benefit the owner or, or even the city necessarily. But I think the idea was, um, because even our planning commission made that recommendation. And I think the idea is it gives people the opportunity to, to make sure that they're, they had an opportunity to have a, a concern voiced before something ever got approved. Um, so let, let's say somebody were to say something about, oh, that house, that house has got a terrible, uh, fence and it's always falling apart or, or whatever's going on with it. That way they'd get an opportunity. So that way the council can go, okay, uh, have, have we made sure that's addressed? Uh, that kind of stuff. So I appreciate, I really appreciate you guys coming. Anybody else have any questions or?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Appreciate it.
Okay. Um.
Answered a lot of good questions.
I think we beat this one up pretty good at this point, right?
That's the way you do it.
Not quite. Um, so when I looked at the, the minutes, there's a couple of things. I, I think Pat has a different copy. So we have a first draft and a proposed one, but Pat has a slightly different one too. For example, in the first draft, um, section F talks about that two hundred foot subject property. It was removed in the proposed one, but Pat has it in a different section in his under item number twelve. And if I look back at the minutes, that was one of the things that was discussed about, um.
Taking out F from Member Finley at the time? That was the revocation part.
Yeah, that's all that, talking about the May eighth, but there are specific people that talked about, um, I can read it for you if you need. Uh, Vidigar expressed his concerns that eliminating public notice and public hearing to consider short-term rental license in neighborhood would be detrimental.
So Pat, is it in there?
Yeah.
Okay.
In his, it is what I'm saying.
Okay. So yeah, it's in there. It's in there.
Sure, that's okay.
Go for it.
So that was my point is I think we need to have a clean copy of everything, um, because we got three different ones running around. And what was the other one? The other one, uh, Becky informed me, if you looked at it, there was one recommendation that the, that the planning commission had that didn't. Um, they didn't know how to answer, that the council needs to answer. And that's if we want to put any limitations on how many of these, uh, that we allow.
Pat, can you speak to this? You were at all these meetings. Please.
The, the planning commission concluded that they didn't want to make a recommendation to the council about any limitations and left it up to the council to make that decision if they wanted to put a limitation at all on it. I think the planning commission's feeling was, I think you should approve this, get it started, see how it plays out. And then if we need to put a limit on it, you could put a limit on it if there's.
Absolutely. You know, we could need to see how far it goes.
What else, what else?
So there's no limitation in here. And there is a, a statement noting the application, whether the dwelling unit will be owner occupied or non-owner occupied, just to advise the city upfront, you know, if somebody can live in there with them or if it's a non-owner occupied.
So not that it's a requirement, but it's been notified on the.
Right, 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 right.
No, it is a requirement. I'm sorry.
Is that incorrect? Well, I know we got three different versions going around here, so.
Right. Um, you were given the initial draft, what was presented to, um, and then the changes after the meeting. But as I explained to you, I went through and listened to the tape again and wrote down, I, I mean, the conversation, you know, went like this.
That's, that's why I'm bringing it up.
So.
And, and Becky sent me her notes of that meeting late last week and I revised this on Saturday to put the best of their efforts after the meeting, Becky's notes from the meeting after re-listening to the tape and my notes in my file from sitting at that meeting. And this kind of reflects all that.
So where do we want to go with this now?
I have confidence in the attorney that he did exactly everything that was in there. The reason that you have multiple copies is because one shows you where we started. The other one shows you what the planning commission came back with. Now this gentleman who's our attorney is offering you, this is the final copy that's made good of all these wishes, everything that was done. So I don't understand why this would be held up. I mean, if, if we went through it and Pat, if you are confident that all these things that we discussed are in the, the copy that you have.
I am. I'll take one more look at it before sharing it with all of you, just to make sure. But I'm confident after spending about an hour and a half on it on Saturday, that this is good.
And it's still gonna come in ordinance form.
You guys, I think you guys should all look at it ahead of the next meeting because it is about ten or fifteen pages long and it's a slow read.
If that's the case, do we want to table it until next meeting? Or do we want to, where are we at?
So, well, here's my recommendation. Obviously this is a good thing, right? We want to get this thing moving. We want to have economic, uh, development. I don't know if there's anybody that's voiced their opinion that's against the idea of having a short-term rental opportunity, uh, in the city. Now, I didn't hear it on the, uh, at the planning commission. I haven't heard it from the council here. I do have some concerns about not having a limitation because to me, by not having a limitation, there is a vulnerability. What if twenty-five of these show up the next, next week, next month or whatever? I don't think there's any problem by us limiting it to five or something like that or whatever number. Can't be one. It's gotta be probably more than two. I don't know a good number.
The council will approve each individual.
Yeah, we go to approve it.
That is true, man. Right.
I mean, we've, we've been through this.
We're approving it. We can, uh, I mean, we're probably better off starting with no limitation than if it becomes too much, then we can just say.
That's it right there.
But once, but once we've approved them, then they're here. So let's say twenty-five of them come in the first year and some of them become problematic and it has a negative connotation.
And there's recourse in it. There's recourse in it. There's fines, there's fees, there's revocation in there. It's in there. We've talked about.
And then the following year, they're not approved anyway then because that year they gotta get their license.
They get denied the following. This has all been discussed.
We approve each.
And here's the other thing that if we're talking about that, you're gonna have increased utility billing. So guess what? Now that means that the city realizes more income from utility billing, electric and water, property taxes, everything else. So I, I just don't understand why we're rehashing something that we had already discussed at this point.
We have not discussed that here.
It's been discussed at the planning commission. It got discussed when we sent it to the planning commission. I mean, I don't understand what is unclear about it. What's unclear? You have concerns. Okay, you've got concerns. Are we gonna hold this up forever because you have concerns? Yeah, go ahead by all means.
What you don't know apparently is six years ago, there was an outcry of a lot of upset residents.
Okay, where are they at?
Because we haven't gone to the problem yet. So that's why I want to make sure that we're addressing that opportunity. So I guess my question to the attorney then is, do we have any, let's, let's say, for example, we approve this and there's no limit and all of a sudden we recognize after time, there is some of them that have been problematic stuff. Would we have any kind of negative, uh, requirement against us to not be able to approve that? Would, would somebody stop us from denying somebody in the future?
No.
Okay. Then that's, that's all that matters to me then. We have the ability. Because my fear was somebody bought it. My fear.
You can't discriminate in granting them or denying them, but if things are getting out of control and you guys say, you know, we got safety concerns here or, or, you know, property damage concerns or whatever.
My fear would be.
Put a hole to it and take a break.
You've been revoked two times in the past three years.
Well, that, that's a no-brainer to me.
My fear would be that somebody would, would, would buy the home with the intention of doing that and then we deny them and they would be able to come back us and say, no, 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 I purchased that home with the clear intent of being able to do this. So now we're.
They should come to us first.
They purchased that home with this ordinance being on the books and they should have read it before they made that commitment. That's.
Absolutely.
If that's the case, I'm good with it.
Thank you.
Are we all good?
I don't know if I heard. Tom, what's your thoughts?
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Okay. So what do we want to do? Do we want to?
So I think the council needs to decide whether they want me to craft an ordinance for maybe the next agenda and I'll try to circulate it early so you have plenty of time to read it. That doesn't mean it can't come up before the board and you decide you want to make some changes to it because there's a lot here. Um, but at least we'll have something solid to talk about.
How about this? We, uh, we vote to place it on file when it's available. So that way, if there's anybody out there that has any concerns about it or something, they have a means to look at it and we approve it the next meeting.
It's not like we're doing anything underhanded here. I mean, this is something that's been talked about. Whatever happened six years ago, happened six years ago. We've done this the right way. I'm gonna tell you that the clerk and I have put in countless hours, countless hours trying to get this done the right way. So I, the suggestion that we haven't crossed our Ts and dotted our Is is just foolish at this point. So if, if the public wants to come up, it's on the agenda. If we want to place it on file, no problem. Place it on file. But I'm not gonna hold any of this up because six years ago, there was, you know, people that had concerns and a, a small group of people. That's, that's not the business we're in. We're, we're looking out for the majority and the greater good of this town. And we're in great, no, 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 no. It's my time. I let you talk. It's my time.
Let me talk.
Okay, I'm done. I'm gonna make a motion that we approve and send to the attorney for ordinance drafting.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. Approve? Yeah. Make a motion to send to the attorney to draft for ordinance. Is that proper language, Pat? Or would you like me to restate my motion?
That would be fine.
Thank you.
And put it on the next agenda.
To draft for ordinance. Okay. So just so I'm clear, because I'm restating the motion. The motion was to send it to the attorney to draft for the next, to approve at the next meeting. Is that correct?
To draft an ordinance for the next meeting for us to.
For consideration at the next consideration to approve.
I mean, otherwise we're just talking forever.
Roll call, please.
Let's go.
Did I get a second?
Yes.
I gave a second, ma'am.
That's okay.
I'm sorry.
You're fine.
That's all right.
It's getting heated.
Finley?
Aye.
Mick Dermott?
Aye.
Steph Nelly?
Aye.
Karen?
Aye. Uh, number twelve, new business, uh, Summer Fun Fest Financial Report. Um, we did get it in here. Um, it's better than we initially thought. Um, we thought with the heat, we actually, we spent a lot of money on some, uh, new, uh, opportunities. We, we had a couple of big bands come in, uh, expensive bands. We had more stuff besides just, uh, um, music. We had some other entertainment. So I thought we were actually gonna be down quite a bit considering, the heat that we had. We had two really bad heat days. We had, uh, two rain incidents. Um, so I thought we were gonna actually be at a loss. Believe it or not, we're at about fourteen hundred dollar pop profit. So it's not the usual of anywhere between ten and twenty thousand, uh, but we did spend quite a bit. So I'm relatively, uh, pleased with it that it's not a negative. Anybody have any questions, concerns about that? I have not gotten, uh, response back, but I know that their season is ending soon about adding to the preview night. So the moment I get, uh, confirmation from, uh, North American Midway Entertainment, I'll let everybody know that. Anything else? Any questions on the report? All right. Uh, next one, travel expen, why does it say travel expenses for City Official?
Because that was something.
I think it's the ordinance.
It's the ordinance.
No, it's the ordinance one. Okay.
Commissioner Baldur joined here, so I'll move to table.
I'll table that.
Second.
We don't want to.
He's not here.
He's not here.
It's not his item.
Yeah, it is his item. I believe, Pat, did he not ask you for?
Do, do we want to put this on the agenda though for the next meeting to adopt that travel ordinance? The one that was tabled back in two thousand eighteen or put on file but never approved? Statutorily, you're supposed to have that ordinance on file. I, I would really recommend you adopt that ordinance.
Well, it is on file. It has been for seven, seven years.
But it's not on the agenda tonight and I'd like to see it on the agenda at the next meeting.
So you want to make a motion to put it on the agenda at least then maybe?
Well, make a motion and we put it on the next agenda.
Do we want to discuss any of it then? Or do we want to?
Well, I think we should wait until.
The ordinance as presented, you should know, uh, follows the state statute word for word. Jim Andrioni drafted it for you. He drafted it for Spring Valley. Spring Valley adopted it. Oglesby did not. Um, it doesn't have one word different than the state statute. We could change it if you wanted to. It has to at least include that language, but I think at least we'd have something on the books and we can talk about making changes after that if you want to.
I just have one question for you.
Sure.
Um, is there something in there that says that approval for anything that we incur expense on, commissioner, mayor, is approved by the council prior to the expense being incurred?
No.
Okay. Is that not a good practice? Is that not something we should talk about putting in there? I think I mentioned it earlier, but I don't want to.
Talking about.
That's a decision for you guys to make, Tony, but I, I haven't seen it in any other municipality, I have to say. Again, you're all in charge of your own departments and you all make your own decisions and are held to answer to those. So I don't see the need for it, but I take my orders from you guys if that's what you want.
I don't see a need for it either. The whole reason the question's coming up is because I went to an economic development opportunity council and they're like, why did you go there for? For a one night?
I believe I've made a motion, so yes. I believe I've made a motion, so yes.
What's the motion though? To place on?
To, to put the ordinance on the agenda for travel expenditures for the next meeting back.
Let's put it on the next meeting.
And if there's anything that wants to be.
I did second it.
All right, roll call please.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stefano Lee?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Number 13, old business, Illinois Scenic Byway. All right, so this item has now been on the agenda for its fourth time. The first time I brought it up, there was a lot of questions about some of the nearby municipalities and how they've used it and benefited from it. So I did have a nice conversation with President of Utica. They really thought it was positive. I brought that information back. Then the next thing that people wanted to do was have a presentation made by them. So at the last meeting, we actually had them come. They made a wonderful presentation. I think everybody was in favor of it. So now I'm looking to get it approved. Just so you know, we spent for Fun Fest alone, where is it at here? Advertising for all of Fun Fest was $14,852 and that's for one event, right? It's a big event. This is $1,500 for our city in general.
And we can use hotel motel tax for that.
That is correct.
I'll make the motion to approve the Illinois River Scenic Byway.
And I'll second that motion.
Anybody else have anyone to talk about first or before? Oh, we'll shut it down, lay down opportunity. Okay, motion is second. Roll call please.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stefano Lee?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. B, building incentive grant facade and utility abatement. Okay, so what this is, is we talked about it last time. We actually separated both of them. The, the building incentive grant no longer has the proposed language in there. That's going to be in C. They, the, the committee recommended to separate the two. The reason for that was is because the new home property tax abatement program does not get approved by the big committee. The utility abatement and the facade is. So there's really just two components to it. The first part is the facade, which is currently what we have. It's been very beneficial. It's probably one of the most beneficial things the city did for our small business improvement. The utility abatement one is the next thing. It's been on file since the last meeting. I think we should approve this. It's going to open up even hopefully a few more opportunities for some of our downtown businesses. Any questions, concerns on that?
So who makes the final approval on any of this?
The council makes the, it's the exact same as the facade. So it goes to the building. That's the reason they didn't want the third one that I'll be talking about next because that would be with the zoning administrator. This one, is it with zoning? I'm not sure if it's with the council or there's, I have to look at that again. But this one here, it's the exact same. It goes to the committee first. The committee reviews it, make sure it fits all the checks and balances, and they make a recommendation to the council and the council would finally do an adoption and approve it. Any questions, concerns over that? And if you're asking why I'm looking to approve one now and not the other one, I can get to that in a little bit, but if you're curious, the reason for that is the, the committee recommended that the other one was such a new and a great idea that we merge it with a kickoff of something else. We don't just put it in with the regular incentive packages that we're going to look at, merge it with an event later on. So I'd like to see if we can get this approved now. Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second that motion.
Roll call please.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stefano Lee?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Thank you, gentlemen. Hopefully we'll see, we'll see an opportunity of, I, I hope.
I have concerns, but I'm not going to hold up the process. If there's a problem, then we'll address it as a council when it comes up. I won't sit here and talk about all my concerns.
Sure.
Thank you.
No problem. C, approve new home property tax abatement with a kickoff event tentatively set for September 28th to coincide with the vacant building tour. So what happened was about 10 years ago, there was a downtown vacant building tour. It was very successful. It was done by some individuals that are still available to the city. So the clerk and I talked about that and we are looking at, we wanted to wait long enough to where we had enough opportunity to schedule it all and get it all run together. The weekend before that is our IML conference, so we're looking at the September 28th. We want to see if we can merge kicking this off with the vacant building tour and a new lot tour, working with developers, the owners and realtors in the area. So any questions, concerns over that? If there's no questions, concerns, can I get a motion to approve?
The, this is C that we're talking about here?
C, correct.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second it.
Roll call please.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Stefano Lee?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Thank you again on that one. We're going to have to find out. That one might take unfortunately a couple of years to see if it actually brought any benefit to generating new homes or not. Number 14, public comment for any topic. Seeing that there is none. Number 15, Commissioner reports, Commissioner Stefano Lee.
Okay, thank you. After crunching numbers and looking at our budget, it appears that we will be operating at a $2.5 million deficit for this fiscal year. The deficit is due to the cost, inflationary costs of the Malik substation upgrade. There's money in the electrical fund and there's money in the TIF account, but they would be zeroed out if we use that money to pay for everything. So in the next meeting or two, I'd like for us to consider whether we want to take money from the funds, leaving them in an undesirable or unstable state, or if we want to consider looking at going to the bank for a loan. Keep that on your radar. I'll be putting that on the agenda. We all have grand ideas, but we have to be good fiduciaries. We need to keep these funds healthy and we need to watch our spending, knowing that everything we incur expense on has gone up drastically. Finally, I'd like to send my condolences to the family of Mary Hancock, her former clerk on her passing. Please keep the family in your prayers. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr., Finley, go ahead.
August 6th is the third annual first responder night. This event will be at the Oglesby Swimming Pool from four to seven. There will be food, swimming, dunk tank, bounce house, and more. Please come down and enjoy. This event is hosted by the Oglesby Public Safety, which is the ambulance, police, and fire. Second of all, two of our officers received commendations from Chief Margus for jobs well done during a recent traffic stop involving a stolen vehicle that was identified through our flock camera system. Officer Revara's awareness led to the successful identification and apprehension of the suspect involved. Also, at a recent traffic stop, Sergeant Nobla, Sergeant Duttlinger, attention to detail led to the identification and apprehension of suspects involved in the shoplifting incident in Ottawa and Peru. Congratulations to both of them for a job well done. At the July 15th regular council meeting regarding the topic of credit card statement, Mayor Kern stated that he saw some weird things for the police department that the police chief signed off on. After view, reviewing the credit card statement and speaking with the police chief, I am 100% positive nothing weird was purchased by the police department. Lastly, on July 22nd special meeting, there was some discussion regarding approving the July 15th regular meeting minutes. A motion was made by Commissioner Baldridge to pass the minutes as previous recorded. The motion was seconded by Commissioner McDermott. The following day, the commissioner and a clerk received an email from Mayor Kern, and I would like to read this to everyone. Some of it was about October 2nd, but the part that I'd like everybody to read is incomplete sentence and incorrect date was pointed out to the clerk as simply clerical errors. Bottom line, the council knowingly approved minutes that were incorrect. Pointing out an error when it is discovered is not only common sense and not necessary on public display, but is what we are supposed to be doing. If you are, if you aren't doing that in your own departments as well, you aren't doing your jobs. That was my job and the right thing to do because I discovered an error and I will continue doing the right things regardless. This is the kind of thing that I have grown to expect from a group that continues to do favors for each other instead of the right thing. But Finley, I'm completely blown away. Star edited out many words here that serve no true value except to convey my continued disappointment in the lack of your professionalism. I rest my case. I will set aside my feelings and opinions and stick to the facts and rules on the right way to approve meeting minutes. Fact one, once the clerk gives the council the meeting package for the next council meeting, which includes the previous meeting minutes to be approved, those minutes are not to be touched, period. Fact two, only at a public meeting will change or correction be made to those meeting minutes with the council approval. That is brought up by the mayor at everything before we approve anything. Fact three, there are reasons why this rule is in place, transparency, integrity, and honesty. Mayor Kern, we may not always agree on topics or on the way we vote on issues, but we can respect each other. Just because we don't see eye to eye on an issue or topic doesn't make someone lack professionalism. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner McDermott?
Okay, I don't really have much. I just would like everyone to check on your neighbors, your animals. It's been hot out there. Check on the elderly and have a good week.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. I'm trying to look up, I don't remember. Do you have the date of that email offhand?
Yep, I have it right here.
What date was that?
It's sent the very next day, 2023, 2024, 1:53 PM.
I don't remember any explicitives in there, anything like that.
Here it is.
Well, I'm going to look it up here.
Turn it out. Hopefully we want to see it right here.
Your email. You're good at something.
I'm looking at it. So just before I even get to the report, you took out the entire section that I talked about.
I did mention that it was about on October 22nd.
October 2nd.
October 2nd thing, which I wasn't involved in whatsoever. That was, you guys went through, I was watching on TV at that time. I think you guys had six meetings that you wasted time on minutes, agendas. I mean, you went six to six meetings with that and so.
This would be July 23rd, 2024, sent from the mayor to the council and CC'd the clerk.
Excuse me.
Yes, I'm trying to tell you where it is. It's your email. You should know.
So what you left out of there is what I said was I had a copy from the exact minutes from October 2nd when we talked about this problem. And I said, before voting to approve the minutes, Baldridge complained that he felt the minutes did not accurately reflect the previous meeting's discussion. Kern had asked the clerk to manage the minutes in a manner which favored Kern's position on issue. Kern asserted that changes requested was information that was voiced during the meeting. A discussion ensued with other council members weighing in. Stefano Lee's opinion was that he felt it wrong for anyone to request changes to the minutes for other than factual errors.
Right, and I think, you know, if you.
Hold on, we're not, this isn't a debate. This isn't a debate.
Wow, you like debating.
This isn't a debate, all right? And.
You were the only one that sought out the alert to change minutes.
The funny thing is, you did say exactly what I put there, but the way you said it, it made it sound like star.
Well, you know what, Mayor? When we talked before about. When we talked before about emails and the way you send them and the way some people read them, some people can take it that you're bullying people. Well, I'm not going to be bullied. I don't do favors or anybody.
Absolutely not.
So this is the way that I proceed, especially when you pull my name out by itself with star items and quotes. And that's a little upsetting because I think my professionalism has spoken over the years. And like I said, we may not see eye to eye on things. We may not vote the same way sometimes. I said, but I do what's best for the city and that's, that's all I'm saying about it. Let's move.
Got it. So what was said there was, he didn't star something out. I didn't say anything derogatory. What I said was I put star, edited out many words here that serve no true value except to convey my continued disappointment. So I said that is what I said. I didn't say.
I believe that's what I said. Thank you.
I know you did. My point with that was we willingly, knowingly approved incorrect minutes. All right, I'm going to get back to my, my mayor's report. I am still disappointed about that though. All right, first one is, I want to wish the kids a great upcoming school year. Hopefully they're going to have a fantastic year. And then August 6th, or sorry, number two, August 17th, summer car, day craze is going to be happening. We're going to have food trucks, music in Seneca Square. It should be a great time. Hope everybody has a wonderful time. That is all I have. I don't think, we have one action item, but it's just to direct to the attorney to prepare some salary ordinances. No other action items are looking to have. Next item is number 17, executive session to discuss the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees. Five ILCS 120 slash two, C1. Can I get a motion to go into executive session?
I'll make a motion to go into executive session to discuss the appointment.
Roll call, please.
Finley?
Hi.
McDermott?
Hi.
Stefanelle?
Hi.
Should've brought up. Somebody's never even met with me yet.
I did. It was, so what I could tell, it was in the book as if it had been passed, but it was not signed. So then I did a little jigging. I realized I was booked then, but I was on vacation that week. And apparently it didn't agenda. I can't.
Yeah, I know, I see them all the time.
But are they probably...
They have a dog, the guy with the dog.
I don't get them.
Roll call?
Okay, we're back in open session. Roll call, please.
Finley?
Here.
McDermott?
Here.
Steph Nellie?
Here.
Kern?
Here. Number eighteen. It's direct to attorney to prepare Sally ordinances for the city clerk, chief of police, and ambulance director. Technically, we've already done the chief of police, but should be good to go.
We'll revise it.
We'll revise if we can.
I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. Number nineteen, can I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I shall move.
Make a second.
Roll call, please.
Finley?
Aye.
McDermott?
Aye.
Steph Nellie?
Aye.
Kern?
Aye. We are adjourned.
Mr. Finley, do you have a minute or two?
Not really.
Okay.
I haven't had dinner, I haven't had lunch, I've been in court.
And he's supposed to be in court. You had a jury.
Did you need that? I had your due jacket, you know what? Cindy Rehugo will let me out. We were in the box and she was questioning us, you know?